Call this meeting to order. The FM County Planning Board Meeting of April 11th, 2023. Like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're going to begin this meeting with a word of prayer. We're going to follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance and we'd like to ask that everyone who can please stand. I ask Mr. Ryan Thompson to open us with prayer.
Dear Jesus, please give us wisdom tonight for the items that are before us to make wise decisions for our county. And please help us all to remember that the gift that we were all given that we celebrated this past Sunday. And give us, give us the guidance to make good choices this evening. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Our agenda, are there any items that need to be removed or changed?
Yes, there are. Item number seven has been withdrawn. Items number eight, nine, and 10 are being postponed to the May 9th Planning Board.
Item number seven is withdrawn? Items eight, nine, and 10 are postponed?
Correct.
Until when?
Until the May 9th Planning Board.
Till the May 9th? Is that it? Are they the only changes? That's it? All right. I call for a motion to approve this agenda with the changes.
Motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Just for a note, for clarification, item number seven, that's Adrian Weber requesting a variance. On Wiley Road, that item has been withdrawn. And items number eight, sketch plan for Three Birds. Item number nine and 10, rezoning for Mr. Randy Haddon on Highway 80 has been postponed. Those three items are postponed until May 9th if anyone is here for those items. I apologize for the inconvenience. Minutes, are there any corrections additions to the minutes from March 14th? Call for a motion to approve these minutes?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for Mr. Thompson, is there a second? Second, Mr. Zipper, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. All items presented tonight will be presented again at our next Board of Commissioners meeting. That meeting is also a public hearing. Do we know the date on that meeting? Not yet. On the Commissioners meeting? The 2nd?
Yes, sir.
May 2nd? So all items presented tonight will be heard again by the County Commissioners as a public hearing. That meeting is on May the 2nd at 6:00 in this room. Items that are approved as well as denied will move forward to the Commissioners. Like to ask that everyone who wishes to speak when the item, if your concern is called, that you would come forward to the podium, that you would state your name for the record as well as sign your name for the record. New business, item number one is a public hearing for Douglas Ken Williams. Request to rezonate 1.9 of 6.9 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the creation of a home site located at 3270 Highway 17 South. This is the first district. Ms. Donegan, do you have any information on this?
I do. What the applicant is proposing to do is to separate this existing home site with surrounding land, which equates to about 1.9 acres, so that there will only be one dwelling on the remaining AR1 portion, so that he can then build a dwelling with zoning approval for an immediate family member as a second dwelling in AR1. Both properties, proposed properties have frontage on 17, and staff is recommending approval.
Right. Thank you, ma'am. Questions, comments from the board at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor or against this request? I call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Have a motion to approve, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Zipper, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item two is a public hearing for Karen Brenley as applicant and agent for Hoyt Brenley and Tina Keener. Request to rezonate 2.52 of 66.48 acres from AR1 and R1 to AR1 and AR2 to allow for a recombination and subdivision of adjacent parcels located on Blue J Road. This is the second district. Ms. Donegan?
Yes, so what the applicant is looking to do, the front blue parcel here is zoned R1. The much larger parcel behind it is AR1. The short story is that they are looking to create a new home site, which will be two acres and zoned AR2. And for that, they will be moving property lines across both the R1 and AR1. So the R1 parcel is going to be reduced to one acre and the excess will be split between the AR1 and proposed AR2 property. The AR1 parcel is going to donate one acre to the new AR2 parcel. And a new home site will be created. And you can see here, just, they're just moving lot lines.
Is there still an R1 zoning or not?
There will, there will be a one acre R1 parcel right here.
That's the one in red?
Yes.
Those two pictures don't look the same.
You don't like my pictures?
Any questions, comments from the board? Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
Hi.
Hey.
Craig Kessler. I'm a neighbor and own property adjoining this and like to ask for approval and support.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Motion for approval, have a second, Mr. Thompson, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you. Item three is a public hearing for Dylan D. Pippen as agent for James Anthony Killen to request to rezonate .121 of 6.14 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for a combination with an adjacent parcel located on Floyd Avenue. This is the third district. Ms. Katie?
So very simply, the smaller parcels seen here outlined in red wishes to acquire this tiny piece, which is highlighted in yellow, from this large blue piece. So this is AR1, and since it's being added to AR2, the zoning needs to match. Staff is recommending approval.
Just squaring up lot lines?
Yes, sir.
Questions, comments?
They didn't create any setback issues for the new, or for either parcel?
Anything further? Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
A motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item number four is a public hearing for Rhonda E. Bartley. Request a variance from required building setbacks to allow for the placement of a mobile home located at 485 Standard Lane. It's on AR1, this is the third district. Ms. Katie?
The applicant wishes to actually replace a mobile home. There's previously been a mobile home and both well and septic on this very small, non-conforming AR1 lot. Because it is non-conforming for AR1, the only possible way to replace the mobile home is to obtain a variance for the side setbacks, which should be 25 and need to be reduced for the success of this to about 17. Staff is recommending approval. It is not out of character with the neighborhood. There are a few R4 areas where you would see sort of high-density, mobile home-type dwellings in the area. The one condition that I will point out is because of the size of the parcel, environmental health is not able to approve the septic currently. So alternate sewer would need to be worked out.
They're replacing an existing mobile home?
The mobile home is not existing, but there has been a mobile home on that site previously.
It looked wooded.
I can let, the applicant is actually here.
What about Oakden Drive running through it, is it, is it going away?
That, that is not correct. It's showing it over here. Oakden Drive is actually way down here. And I'm not sure why it's showing up like that.
Okay, I got you.
It certainly looks like a wooded lot.
The variance is for the setback, not for the structure that they're trying to put on there.
Correct.
Or even to build a structure, they'd have to have a variance. I mean, that's about as narrow as you can go.
Yeah. Any further discussion at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Thompson, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item five is a public hearing for Mandy Malfis Rowe. Request to rezonate 1.36 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the combination of adjacent parcels located on 5th Street. This is the third district. Ms. Katie?
The applicant wishes owns both of these parcels and actually has previously had to come through for a variance to replace the mobile home due to setback issues. They have applied for a pool permit and unfortunately, where they would like their pool straddles an existing property line. So the best way to fix this is to combine the two non-conforming AR1 parcels because in total, they will still not be the five acres necessary. It has to be rezoned. Staff is recommending approval.
So they already owned both parcels?
That is correct.
But they couldn't put a pool in?
They would like the pool to be right there.
Where the old pool was.
Yes. Close to the house. And unfortunately, there's a property line running right through where they want a pool to be.
What's the zoning of the adjacent properties?
It's pretty much mostly non-conforming AR1, except for this kind of strange tiny B1.
Right, so in order for any of those, if they were similar situation, they would do a similar request?
Correct.
Any further questions, comments? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item six is a public hearing for Cash Redman. Request to rezonate 2 of 56.13 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the creation of a home site located at 986 Courthouse Road. This is the fourth district. Ms. Donegan?
The applicant wishes to create a home site for his son. Because the proposed home site is only two acres, it needs to be rezoned to AR2. Staff is recommending approval.
Questions, comments?
I guess same question, what's the adjacent zoning, just, um... Is there some, yeah, there's some close by?
Yes.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion. Make a motion to approve with staff. Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item seven was withdrawn, eight, nine, and 10 are postponed. Item number 11 and 12 are the same applicant. Item number 11 is a public hearing for Terra Moore Development LLC. As agent for Ashley Fleetwood and Angela Usher. Request to rezonate 1.53 acres from B1 and AR1 to B2 for the development of a commercial retail site located on Shawnee Road and Georgia Highway 21 North. This is the third district. Ms. Conklin?
Yes, as you see in the zoning exhibit, which is the next slide, the parcel on the corner is currently zoned B1. Across from that on Shawnee Road is a B3 parcel with, has an existing convenience store. And then across Highway 21, there's B2 and B3 parcels, although they're not developed for commercial use at this time. The applicant is wish, is asking to rezonate both the current B1 parcel and then the parcel next to it, the AR1 parcel, the two with the red stars on them. And if you go back a slide, we have the exhibit for the proposed retail development. We've met with the applicant via Zoom a few times over the past, it seems like a year, maybe a year. We've met with a few times and we've discussed entrance placement, building placement. We've discussed options for stormwater management. We've discussed options for well and septic. So we feel we have a good understanding of the project. And at this time, the rezoning, we're recommending approval of the rezoning because it does meet the zoning district requirements. It is in an area, a little, a commercial node, if you will, at Highway 21 in Shawnee. There are some buffer questions that are, will be better explained in the, in the variance application. But basically, they are with B2, they're required to have a 30-foot vegetative buffer around the perimeter of the property that doesn't have a driveway. And the applicants are requesting reductions. And, and those reductions are oftentimes an administrative kind of approval. But in order to just get everything clear upfront before a sketch plan is submitted, they wanted to have assurances that, that these would be permitted. And so you see at the top of the image there, the detention area. The first request, I'm going to go straight into the variance if, if I can explain it all together here. The first request is to reduce the required vegetative buffer there to allow the detention area, the, the pond, to encroach into the buffer area. And that is something that on a case-by-case basis, we do actually permit in larger commercial or industrial developments as stormwater infiltration is one of the goals of the, of maintaining a vegetative buffer. So staff would recommend approval on that one. The second one is down in the front for the septic system replacement area. They're actually, they're requesting, again, encroachment into the required 30-foot buffer along Highway 21. And they're further asking for a reduction there. Yes, for the septic drain field and replacement area. And this, something to consider is that if the driveway from the site were onto Highway 21, that, that would only be a 10-foot landscape buffer required. But because they've responded to the former county engineer who met with them last year, his request to move the, make sure the entrance was far, as far away from 21 as possible and push it back to the back of the lot and to not try to encroach on, you know, get a driveway onto Highway 21. This was, and to of course ensure visibility of the store, we're inclined to recommend, you know, approval of the buffer reduction on the Highway 21 frontage, which also accommodates their need to encroach their drain field and replacement area into that area. Because for visibility of the store and because if there had been a driveway, it would have been a smaller buffer anyway. And this way, we're meeting our access management policy requirements by keeping traffic and, and turn movements off Highway 21 at that point. The third one is, where's the other one? Oh yeah, so that, that actually, these all go together. They're, they're asking for a reduction of the 30-foot buffer requirement. Can you go to the zoning exhibit? So you see there where across Highway 21, where it's blue, the, the, the buffer would have been smaller anyway. But across 21 where it's green and the, and the AR1, that's where the 30-foot comes in. And if I could... So it's actually kind of a jog. You know, the required buffer goes with the zoning across in, in the next adjacent parcel. So on the, in the current B1 zone parcel, that's that mid-green across, that, the required buffer there would have been 30 feet. But then the parcel next to it, the AR1 parcel, the parcel across from that is, is commercial. So it would have been a smaller, it would have been a 15-foot buffer. So if they were, you know, abiding by our buffer requirements, they could have had a jogged line there anyway. And this way, they're asking to just smooth that line out and have a reduced buffer along the Highway 21 buff, Highway 21 frontage. So that is my presentation. If you have any questions to clarify that, I can answer them.
What's the buffer to the remaining AR zone property adjacent to this parcel?
It's going to remain at 30?
Stay at 30.
30 feet, yes. And they're showing, ah, yes. So in the south, in the corner, in the bottom right where your curse, in the bottom right there where the variance request number two, right. So there is, that will encroach, that replacement area will encroach into the required 30-foot vegetative buffer. A small section there at the very corner, at the frontage of Highway 21 in the corner of the, the neighboring property. But for the remainder of it, up towards Etheridge Street, it will be 30. It's showing us 30 feet on this. This is not a sketch plan. This is, this is a rezoning exhibit, but it is showing us 30 feet for the remainder.
On Etheridge Street, it's showing 15 feet?
And along Etheridge Street, they're requesting a reduction to 15 feet. But the detention area is right next to that.
Right.
And we have in the past permitted ponds within the buffer area because they do meet the filtration standard for a buffer, vegetative buffer. So in this case, there's a distance between Etheridge Street and the actual development, the construction that's greater than 30 feet, but the vegetative portion will be 15 feet.
And are you, um, do you know where the detention is going to drain?
The applicant is here and we've, we've had discussions of that. And this is slightly different from the, the version we discussed during our last pre-application meeting. So if you'd like to invite the applicant up.
All right. Thank you, Teresa. Is there any questions, comments at this time?
I guess I got, I have one more. What is it about this retail that makes, and I should, I should know this, but I don't, that makes B2 necessary and not the B1 that's the existing zoning? Just so I follow that.
For these kind of commercial developments, in fact, I think we've gone with B3 previously. We thought B3 might be a little, was unnecessary. B2 is, is a good solid in-between. B, they, if they had chosen B1, we might have been able to work with that too. I think B2 was just matching, you know, the zoning across Highway 21. It's not out of character. In fact, there's, there's B3, B2, and B1 all in that area. So really, it's just kind of a middle ground. But we can look at the B2 zoning district requirements. I can't say...
That's okay. I mean, I'm interested here if there's other folks. I just wanted to understand myself a bit, so.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone to speak on behalf of this project? Yes, sir. And Ms., in just, just one minute. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name's Mitcham Walker, representing Terra Moore Development along with my colleagues Chris West and Pete Shownhour. Just wanted to introduce ourselves and open ourselves up to any questions that we may be able to help with. Terra Moore's been a developer in the southeast for about 20 years now and done a lot of similar projects such as the one you see in front of you. Approximately, you know, upwards of 500 similar stores. And we're looking forward to being able to bring it to the area. So if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
I mean, I just asked about the drainage, I mean, where the detention, where the outfall is?
I'll have Pete address that.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Pete Shownhour with Tidewater Engineering. I do a lot of these projects with, with Terra Moore. The, the outfall for the drainage is going to be into Etheridge and then northeast to Shawnee and then, and then sort of northeast towards the, that ditch is parallel with the railroad. That's the plan of action right now.
And there's a adequate ditch system there to handle that water?
We, yeah, we've got a survey, actually, that's a survey to go back out there and, and make sure that everything was, was looking good. Now, you know, we'll look at the culvers, there's some driveway culvers. We'll have to, you know, check that once we get to that point, make sure they don't need to be cleaned out or something like that. But it's a little early in the, early in the game to be doing that right now.
Questions, comments?
I think mine will be about the variance. That's two separate things, right? We're talking zoning right now.
Yeah, it'd be, I mean, it'd be the next one. Anything further from the board? Yes, sir.
I ask y'all to apologize. I have lost 50% of my hearing and half of my comprehension. And I see the pictures up there and I saw some arrows. I can't tell you one word she said, okay? said, okay? There's plenty of times that I've got letters about zoning, changing different stuff, and y'all haven't seen me here. I have a little bit of unknown. I just heard them talking about the drainage system, okay? I don't know exactly what they said, but I heard drainage system, so I knew it was a thing. I'm not against the project, okay? I'll tell you that right now. One time, there was three stores on 21. But there is a drainage problem in Shawnee. It is basically low ground is what it is. It's what it is, what it is. He said he took some surveys. I don't, don't know if he may have mentioned topo's, he may have, but, but that's part of it. And I can show you some pictures that I have that have some drainage problems toward the railroad track. And I talked to, an individual in there, talked to me some this week and got me concerned. And I went and looked, bear with me, a man trying to call his name Fleetwood. He is one of the ones that's, they're going to be buying the property from. He has a catch basin just outside his yard on the state property. I don't know whether it shows it up there or not, which can cause, what's going on can cause a drainage problem. So I went and looked today because of what I was told about some folks. I went across 21, and I'd say it's about two or three inches of that pipe where that water comes out, that does not have dirt in it. And all around in front of that pipe, dirt is both ways up and down 21. In other words, the water, the water has to be pushed out what little can come out right there. And I'm not hearing exactly what's going on, but I heard what he said. But that, that could help alleviate some of the problems if you go in that way with the water, what I'm saying is what I'm trying to say on that. And I, and something else I noticed while I was sitting there, I saw a couple of dark blue captions up there on the screen with a little small piece out of it. I don't know what was said on that. Was that of value?
The, across the highway is commercial, the dark blue? The dark blue is zone commercial, and that's the only reason it was shown?
Okay.
It has some effect to do with the buffer on, on the piece of property in question. And on the drainage, they're going to take the water to the railroad, down Shawnee Road to the railroad.
Well, I think you better rethink that a little bit and go in the direction that I just mentioned is the problem. Because that, they're going to have a problem with it. The last time that those ditches were drained out in Shawnee, I think you're looking at the fellow that did it. And I don't think it's been done since. And they pretty much stopped up again. And if they clean them out now, it'd be the same thing in the future is what it's going to be. I mean, I've been there all my life, okay, right close around there. I know what it is. And I'm not, and just like I told you, I'm not against the project. I'm not. But whatever you do now, it's going to be bearing what goes on down the road is what it is on that. But I think that's pretty much what I wanted to say. And, and what the project consists of right now is the two parcels in question. Is that right? That's the only thing that's going to really be involved.
Yes, sir. That's it.
All right. I appreciate y'all bearing with me.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. And that was Mr. Kerry Graham.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're all right.
Chairman, let me, just a second with, um...
Did I get your name?
Al Usher, I'm sorry. With what they're going to do, I think, you know, with the way they're going to slope that property to go into that detention pond, the corner itself is going to, I mean, obviously help it. Now, the drainage issue, what Kerry's talking about, and him talking about going to the railroad, you know, once it leaves Etheridge Road, which obviously is going to help that, it's going to help those, you know, even Mr. Clay on then, it's going to help his property. Because I think naturally it's going to flow that way. But, you know, when it goes from Etheridge Road down Shawnee Road to the railroad, that's a county problem with the ditch there, you know, as far as them being cleaned out. So, and I think that's, you know, something that, the, as far as the ditch is being cleaned out, once if, if that's done, and they're maintained properly, then that water would flow like it's supposed to. So, but I think obviously what they're going to do is, is going to work like it's supposed to. I think it'll be a plus, all in all, so.
Well, correct. And if it's, if it's maintained correctly, I mean, obviously, when you put in this kind of impervious surface, you know, versus what's there, and, and as the gentleman stated, I think there needs to be some attention, some, you know, some looking at some pipes up there that are currently there, that we all know need to be cleaned out.
There's some issues, there's some issues on Etheridge Road, right on that corner, that what they're going to do is obviously gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna fix that problem. So...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Usher. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Yes, sir?
Hi. I'll obey the rules and put my name down. I'm Ashley Fleetwood, and I own the other property next to Al that is proposed to be used for the development. I don't want to say a lot about the drainage problem, because we all know, in that area, we all know that there is a problem there, because the road is built up higher. 21 is higher than the existing property. Now, I know Terramore are going to take care of that problem. And it seems to me like they've got the engineers involved to take care of the drainage from that whole area, which will benefit, as Al said, it will benefit the properties in the area. The couple of properties, literally are just a couple of properties on Etheridge, and Melvin's property next door to mine. So, as far as the drainage goes, I think that will be taken care of. What I just wanted to say was, yes, I have vested interest in this, to sell my property. But if I wasn't selling it, to have this kind of development in that area would be a godsend, because it's 10 miles down the road to Springfield to here, to the nearest half-decent store. For all of the other people at the back of us, on Old Dixie Highway and Silver Hill and all the rest, they've got to go to Clough or to Springfield. Goodness knows how far it is all the way up to Sylvania, to the next door. So for those people who either have difficulty getting around, or who have not wanting to have the expense of driving all of those miles every time they run out of eggs, or milk, or whatever it is, this would be an absolute real plus. And that's what I'd like you to bear in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleetwood. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against? Questions, comments from the board? Call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Smith. All those in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item 12 is a public hearing for Terramore Development LLC. His agent for Ashley Fleetwood and Angela Usher requests a variance from required development buffers located on Shawnee Road and Georgia Highway 21 North on B1 and AR1. Proposed zoning B2, third district. Ms. Teresa, do you have anything additional you'd like to add at this time?
Uh, no, but I believe there was a question.
Yeah, right, and a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to elaborate, since it was not, yeah, yeah, a sketch plan, and maybe the rest of the board doesn't care, right? But I just didn't know if we needed to clarify if we're going to allow that encroachment into the 30-foot buffer that is only for the septic use. In other words, in the future, the building can't slide to be 15 feet off that line. Just, I guess, a question for discussion, if we need to make that very clear in the motion, or maybe that's already a recommendation and I missed it.
You can make a recommendation, and we would make sure that was included in the sketch plan, staff review.
So it's 10 in the front? 30 on the side and 15 in the rear, is that right?
Yeah.
10 feet, and these are all landscape buffers?
Yes.
Are there any additional questions, comments at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Any new information?
So, just to make sure we're all clear, the, the building's definitely outside of what would be a required 30-foot buffer. So I think the pinch point is the parking, that that's really what's driving the 10-foot landscape buffer.
Sir, could I, could I get you to come to the microphone?
Oh, I'm so sorry. So the, the pinch point for the buffer along Highway 21 is really due to the parking. So the building's going to be out, the building's not going to move. When we come back with a sketch plan, the building's going to be there.
That buffer to 21 is not the concern. I was more concerned with the, the septic field and that buffer that's adjacent to the remaining AR1 parcel that's adjacent.
Got you. And that, and that's actually the replacement area, so that's just there. I have to show it to get a septic permit. It's really, it's not going to be there. It may, I can't say it'll never be there, but that's just a EPD requirement, or County Health Department requirement. When we do the septic design, we prove that if there's a failure, we have additional space to replace it.
Yes, I mean, I understand the buffer to the front, legitimate for sure. I think the access point's more important than the buffer to Highway 21, for sure, like you've got it.
And that's, that's really with, all the buffer requests, we really think that the one adjacent to the AR1 is, is a critical buffer that we really wanted to preserve. And then, we know, we still have, even though that, that replacement area is encroaching into it, there's still a lot, a lot of ability for us to screen it heavily, you know, give a really good landscape buffer there.
My point was just that, we're making this decision, something happens, two years from now, I want it to be clear that it was just for that piece. If that's what the rest of the board agrees to, it doesn't bother me one way or the other.
Anything further? Call for a motion.
I guess since I confused it, I'll try, take a shot at it. I make a motion to approve the variance request as, as requested, just with the following clarification, that the only variance into the 30-foot buffer adjacent to the existing AR1 parcels would be for a future septic drain field.
All right. I have a motion. Is there any discussion on a motion? Call for a second.
A second.
Second, Mr. Zipper. All those in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Item 13 is a public hearing for Adrian Weber. His agent for Wayne Bowen requests to rezonate .91 acres from B3 to I1 to allow for increased use potential of existing structures located on Goshen Road. And then the following item is going to be a variance. Ms. Conkennen?
Oh, that's, that is actually me. I'm sorry.
Ma'am? Teresa? What? I'm sorry. Is it done again?
All right. Yes, I apologize. So, this, this small commercial industrial area off of Commercial Court, you may remember, because it's been here a few times before, they've somewhat, two or three at a time, been rezoning to industrial, just to take advantage of surrounding zonings for larger warehouse activity, and to expand activities presented from there, such as light assembly, things of that nature. So, the property in the front, now, on, on Goshen Road extension, is asking to do the same thing to stay competitive and in the light industrial theme that is going through this development. The next item they're asking for a variance is because this area was developed with kind of no buffers to speak of in mind. Everything there is existing, there's no plans to expand the development on the property. They, they simply, because they're rezoning, and they cannot meet contemporary buffers, are asking to waive the development buffers. Staff is recommending approval.
Questions or comments? I mean, is there a use that they can't, that they're not allowed to do now? And is that the reason?
The applicant, and I'm not sure if there is applicant or an agent here tonight, did not specify, but it is leased property. So I believe that this was to make it more attractive to potential tenants.
That's why we did the other adjacent properties to I1. Isn't that correct? I think that was...
Partially, yes. That is correct, yes.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request?
Hi there. I'm Adrian Weber. I am the agent representing the owner of the property. The owner felt that it would give more value to the property and be more competitive to its neighboring tracks. And it gives them a wider range of use of tenants that could occupy the, the space. And that in itself would allow, you know, higher, more competitive rents to be asked for. There's currently four tenants in place that range from a church to Jeep parts and a custom cabinetry designer.
But I guess all the current tenants fall under the B3? I mean, I guess the I1's not needed for them currently?
No, not specifically, yes, sir.
I'm just, just, just curious.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Ms. Weber. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right. Nothing further from the board. I call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve with all the staff recommendations.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Mr. Thompson. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item 14 is a public hearing for Adrian Weber. His agent for Wayne Bowen requests a variance for required development buffers between existing developed parcels located on Goshen Road Extension, Zone B3, proposed zoning I1. This is the fifth district. Anything additional? I mean, all right, questions, comments? Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Call for a motion.
Make a motion for approval with all staff recommendations.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Smith. All those in favor of approval?
No.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item 15 is a, items 15 and 16. Item 15 is a public hearing for Greg Coleman. His agent for William Roger Spikes III, ETA L. Requests to rezonate 14.86 acres from AR1 and AR2 to I1 to allow for industrial development located on Old Augusta Road. This is the fifth district, and the sketch plan is to follow. Ms. Conkennen?
Yes, this proposal is to rezone the three parcels on Old Augusta Road. And as a result of that rezoning request, we submitted the project for review as a development of regional impact. That report has not returned as expected, so the staff report's not corrected, is not complete. The staff, the, I'm sorry, the final report was not ready today, when we talked to the planner at the Regional Commission. It will be here within the next day or so. They have until Friday to meet their 30-day review requirement. So we can make the presentation tonight, and you can discuss, but we cannot vote on it tonight to meet the requirements of the DRI rules. But we can get the information out, and you can ask questions if you would like to go on. We can do that. I'm not sure the applicant is here. It's entirely possible that Mr. Coleman...
We're here.
You are? Oh, I didn't see, okay. All right, so they're here. We're here. We can talk. But there cannot be a vote tonight on this or the sketch plan. We'll have to just wait until we have the report in our hands, distribute that to you, and then we can do a called meeting next week. And that way, we can keep it on the schedule for the Board of Commissioners meeting, which would be on the May 2nd, if you wish. We can do that.
So this will be discussion only? There will be no action taken?
There, there can be no action taken.
But it is the public hearing.
It can be a public hearing.
All right. Well, I guess, since everybody's here, we might as well have the public hearing.
All right. So this, as, as I've said, the, the three... All right, so this, as, as I've said, the, the three parcels on Old Augusta Road are the subject of the rezoning. The sketch plan, which, you know, I can, I'll refer to occasionally, is for the entire tract that's outlined there in red, and it's for two inter- includes two interior parcels that were previously rezoned, that were previously reviewed for, uh, regional impact and were previously, uh, approved for a buffer reduction on the eastern boundary. The rezoning, uh, did yield some comments, which the Regional Commission did share with me, so I can, I can reference them to, right now, and the main com- main, uh, main comments came from the City of Savannah, and they're concerned that their source water protection plan, um, which has been revised over the, since in two thousand two, again in twenty nineteen and again in twenty twenty-two, um, shows an, uh, increase in the risk to the area and to the Savannah water intake by increased development in the area, so they do have concern about, uh, the rezoning from that standpoint. There's a high risk, uh, they say, to the region's primary sources of drinking water. Uh, we are confident that our review and adherence to our flood damage prevention ordinance and all other ordinances will ensure a, 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 a development that will meet the standards going forward. Uh, the parcels are located in the inter-management zone for Abercorn Creek and those, and the intensive uses and impervious cover could negatively affect water quality, so as a result of that, we have agreed with Savannah on site design requirements such as, uh, spill responses, site management, and stormwater management that's adequate to protect the drinking water supplies, and again, we're confident that going forward, that our review and our, uh, inspections and administration of this project can, can ensure that that's all met. Uh, Old Augusta Road is a designated truck route, the proposed entrance, which is on Old Augusta Road, uh, will be, can be full access until planned improvements are put in place, and at that point, it would be right in, right out only to be served later by roundabouts to the north and south of the, of the development. Uh, the parcels are surrounded by I one zone property and wetlands and stormwater infrastructure on the proposed industrial development site will provide more than the required twenty-five-foot buffer to the adjacent I one property. As you see, it's, these three parcels are surrounded by red, which is our I one zoning district, and so, once they, i- if they are to be rezoned, um, all inter- and all internal boundaries, if not combined, have a twenty-five-foot vegetative buffer requirement between the red parcels, uh, but this, we assume, would be combined into one larger tract, which would then accommodate the, the site, the concept plan that's been submitted. Uh, the conditions that we've added here are that a sketch plan must be submitted, and that has been submitted. Uh, the, the site development plans will have to comply with our Water Resource Protection Ordinance, stormwater management requirements, and flood damage prevention requirements, uh, wetlands impacts, if any, will be permitted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, development plans must meet the requirements of the zoning, the I one zoning district, and a traffic study, uh, must be submitted during development plan review process per our requirements. There can be no, uh, the condition, uh, we have included the condition that there can be no traffic entrance to or exit from the development site using Abercorn Road. That is, uh, going back to earlier versions of this, uh, rezoning in this area, that's been a, a strong preference of the, of the, the board, uh, of, of, of staff and the, of the Board of Commissioners, and I assume the Planning Board, to keep truck traffic off Abercorn Road. So, we are asking or requiring that, if you see up in the upper part of the, the development site, there's that little sliver of land that goes to Abercorn Road, so that would have to be closed off, uh, to ensure that no truck, that there could be no truck access. But of course, as you see, there's no planned road to that area on the concept plan. And then, land clearing, a final condition is that any land clearing that takes place out, outside of our normal, our, our, our usual hours would have to be cleared by the, the county manager in the form of a night work permit, which, um, is something that we would be willing to discuss with the applicants.
Ms. Donigan, would you please, for my benefit and maybe everybody's benefit, show me exactly on that map where the Abercorn Landing, uh, or the water treatment plant is on, uh, the Savannah River for the City of Savannah? Can you show me that?
She's pointing to it, it's in that big curve right there.
Get a screen on it. Yeah, I see it now, but I'm just gonna put it in perspective to-
Yeah, you can see the e- you can see the easement coming out of it.
That's the area where Abercorn Road runs into, on this, on this map right here. That's exactly- Right here?
Yeah, Peter, you can see the clear easement, the runs all the way out of it through diagonal across those properties, that's where it's going, back to their treatment plant.
Are you done, Ms. Conkennen? Is there any discussion from the board at this time? All right, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to write my name here as well?
Please.
Uh, I'll write it afterwards. My name is Tanya Bonitativus, I'm the Savannah River Keeper. I, uh, I would like to strongly, strongly encourage you to deny, um, this rezoning. I'm, I'm kinda in shock, honestly, about this. Uh, this is the drinking water source for not only Effingham, or not only Chatham, but also your county. Um, and if things go wrong, there is, there is no buffer. Um, a twenty-five-foot vegetative buffer is not the same as stopping a ditch. Um, and this, this site, even scarier than the last one, um, this, this water doesn't just flow one way off of this property, this is tidal. So, if you do have a spill, it's not gonna necessarily just disappear down river, it will sit. Um, and, and then, wh- what do you do? And more importantly, who legally is responsible for that, because you guys are now rezoning and knowing that there is a real risk to this drinking water intake. When it goes wrong, we have a whole season called hurricane season, when it goes wrong, this is built a hundred-year flood plain, we know we break that on a regular basis, that's a twenty-year flood, this is built to a hundred-year. That, that, that's gonna happen sooner than later, so this isn't, this isn't an F. Um, I think overall, I, I hope we can work with the county to encourage a slowdown of this type of growth in the swamps that is completely gutting your resiliency. There is no question whether there's going to be more rains coming into this community, there is no question whether storm water is becoming more and more important, especially as you continue to grow, and thi- this is a disaster, this is a disaster in, in the making, and I'm terrified of it, to be perfectly honest, and I work, um, I have the opportunity to work out the whole river and have, have been in line for a lot of different spills throughout the years and have seen how those have negatively affected drinking water. So, thank you for, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Tanya.
Well, I have a question.
Yes.
You know, what scares me is that the Savannah River has, um, a, a radioactive isotope of hydrogen called tritium, and we're drinking that. That's what scares me.
Um-
You guys, how much tritium is in that water?
So, the, so the answer is that that's two hundred miles upstream, or, excuse me, let me not, I, I apologize. It's about a hundred miles upstream where you have Vogtle and, and SRS, and there is tritium, there's, uh, selenium, there's strontium, and there's also heavy metals that come off the site. Um, and that is a huge issue, and-
There's carcinogens.
Absolutely, and, and you also have, um, other carcinogens that are closer even from the port itself and its historic uses. Um, the, the problem directly with, with this intake is there is no warning time, there is no, like, ring the bell, you've got twelve hours to turn off the intake, like you do with the tritium release or if you had a release from Augusta. But I would be standing here saying this, and for any real, real industrial development that has the potential of spill, um, you just, the, the more you have something directly next to an intake, you just don't have any warning time. I mean, it, when it goes wrong, it's done, it's gone. Um, working on the Kalin Mines on, on Briar Creek, I watched, uh, Waynesboro, the city and Burke County took a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of damage immediately from a Kalin spill that was eight miles upstream, and that was because they, you know, it was, even then, it was hard to tell them and get the drinking water turned off, and they just barely started pulling stuff in, so, I mean, it's just, I just don't know how you're going to sit there and know immediately when there is a spill and trigger somebody to go and turn off a switch for the City of Savannah before you have caused a massive amount of damage. Now, it could be twenty years down the road, but I think, I, I, I also think it would be worth asking your lawyers who would be responsible in that situation. Like, legally, would somebody be able to hold Effingham accountable? I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Thank you.
So, Ms. Tanya, and I'll just say while you're, while you're there, for everyone, just to, just to, um, reiterate what Ms. Conkennen said, there will be another meeting-
Yep.
On the nineteenth, um, at one P M. here.
For a special called meeting for, for a vote, you would need to, uh, I believe, address that with a motion.
Okay, but there, I mean, so it, I mean, everybody will either have to be allowed to call in, or, I mean, have the opportunity to come here, and everyone who's, doesn't come can call in. I mean, do one or the other, or, I mean, I guess I'm a little bit confused about this call meeting.
So, the, the, the requirements for, uh, remote access and remote voting to meetings, uh, is, uh, uh, I, now that the COVID emergency is technically over, you can attend via, obviously, the remote, but you need a quorum actually in person, uh, to, uh, actually, uh, to call the meeting to order.
We'll have to have three people here.
That's it, yeah.
That's, that's what I thought as well.
The, the rest can call in, uh, but I, their vote technically won't count on the record, but you'll have your quorum, so, and they'll be able to get the feedback.
So, on April the nineteenth at one P M., there will be a meeting in this room? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's right.
We can do that, I think that there was some discussion about w- what they, people could get here, and if that works for you, for you all, that is certainly something we'll accommodate.
I can be here. You can't? You can be, Brad. So, we got a quorum. And hopefully, I mean, obviously, by that meeting, the DRI, which I'm sure you're aware of, developmental regional impact, will be back, and it will be interesting to see what their comments are to, to your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Yes, yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Doug Faircloth, the Coleman Company, here representing the applicant. I just wanted to touch on the rezoning portion of it, so just make sure we're on the same page, we are just rezoning the three parcels at the front, the rear is in, fully entitled already, I one. Um, so the larger portion of this development, you know, could move forward with or without the rezoning. Um, I guess beyond that, just to touch base on the water quality issues real quick, um, you know, I'm sure you're all aware, you know, for hazardous material storage, that's a whole different set of permits from EPD, EPA, that, that would fall on the tenants themselves and their operations, you know, they have their own spill requirements, that kind of things for those kind of special permits, you know, you're talking hydrocarbons, things like that in mass quantity. What we're talking about here is spec warehouse space, it's the same thing you see up and down twenty-one, it's containers in, containers out from the porch, for the most part. Um, so with that, you know, we do have all of our same typical permitting process we go through on every project, water quality detention, um, you know, stormwater ordinances from the county, et cetera, and we're more than happy to take on any and all of those, we'll office the account for everything we can in design. But, you know, we are sensitive to the issues of water quality in the river. I grew up in Effingham County, my parents still live in Lincoln, you know, me as much as anybody still wants to see this be successful. So, I'd just say all that to say that as the applicant, you know, we are aware of the issues and we are sensitive to it, and that we'll be more than happy to work with you guys as we get through sketch plan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I am Laura Walker, I am the Environmental Manager with the City of Savannah Water Resources Division. I have so much I wanna say right now, um, but I'm gonna start with the comment that you made about tritium. So, were you here in nineteen ninety-one?
Yes.
Do you remember the spill at the Savannah River site?
No.
There was one. The Department of Energy told us it was only two bathtubs full, you know, a hundred miles up, two bathtubs full. As a water utility in Georgia and the water utilities in South Carolina, we are still fighting the perception that there's tritium in our water. Even though it was only two bathtubs full, the City of Savannah had to pull on the incoming tide for two weeks just to mitigate any kind of impact. We could not do that today, your demand is great, your demand is growing. Back then, in nineteen ninety-one, we had the luxury of being able to do that and still supply y'all water and Chatham County water. We couldn't do that today, all right? So, think about that. We have a new modeler on staff, he is fabulous, he's brilliant, he's taught us a lot, and I know now, I thought I was getting groundwater at my house on Forty-fourth Street, but I'm at, this is my water. Um, so, I have not only a professional but a personal vested interest in this. Science tells us that the most affordable and safe drinking water comes from a forested watershed. And, gentlemen, we have lived on that for a long time and had great, safe drinking water because we have had a forested watershed. Now, y'all are growing, y'all have so much going on. Um, it's here and now. So, you have things to consider. Development is gonna come, right? It's not going away, your agendas are getting longer. This is our only drinking water intake. We can't rely on the Florida aquifer so much because people in the past have not been efficient and used it wisely. This is it for us. So, I want you to consider that. The, the risk that she was talking about a while ago, the City of Savannah, as your water provider, um, in two thousand and two, to comply with state requirements, had to do a source water protection plan. Even though it's, it's, it's your water, body of water, we, the utility, the water provider, had to do this plan. And what it requires us to do is, in a seven and thirteen-mile radius around the intake, do an inventory of all the developments, of all the land uses around there. So, when we finished ours in two thou- the first one in two thousand and three, there was a low risk to the intake. We did an update in two thousand and nineteen, there was a medium risk to the intake, because you're growing, people are coming to Effingham County. Back in July, when this, uh, property went through the first time for a variance and for a development, and with all of the other developments that y'all had approved around the intake, we redid our assessment. There was a sixty-eight percent increase to now a high risk in just two years because of the one-mile radius and all the development that is happening there that, that y'all have approved. It's, it's not too late. We are your partner. It's, it's your water, it's our region's water, we need it to grow and to thrive, but we need it to be safe and we need it to be affordable. When the risk goes up, we have to react as a utility, we have to put in safeguards, um, higher and more expensive treatment options, for example. The, um, treatment plant on Highway twenty-one was built in the fifties. It's a very simple system. It's able to be a very simple, not complicated, not high-tech system because our source water is good. We start with good, we go, put it through a little, um, sedimentation and filtration, add a little chlorine, and that's it. It's affordable that way. But with these increased risks and the runoff from, uh, the warehouses, even though that may seem like an, uh- may seem like a, a not intense land use it is, you have a lot of asphalt, you have the trucks, they're emitting hydrocarbons, their exhaust, the oil, you know all that stuff that comes on the ground, just go to a gas station. And when it rains, where is it gonna go? All of those things are risks and potential pollution, pollutants to our drinking water, and therefore we have to upgrade our treatment. And that's more costly. We're all gonna pay for it. We're all gonna pay for it. So just asked, ask that you keep that in mind going forward. We need our forest around the intake, and this property in particular, at our back door, is very, very critical. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Good evening, I'm Ron Feldner with Savannah Water Resources. Appreciate all of Tanya's and Laura's comments. I'm gonna come at it from a little bit of a different perspective. Um, we came here last July and August when Statzer Investments was, um, looking to develop warehouse and industrial development in this area, and worked through some issues, and sometime late last year, the project fell apart. Don't really understand the reasons why it fell apart. You'd have to ask the Statzer folks. But after that occurred in the first part of this year, um, back on about the 9th or 10th of February, um, we had gotten word that the large property owner that was referred to earlier, Mr. Porter, was actually interested in having a conversation with Savannah about buying his piece, which I think is about maybe 80 or 90 acres, which obviously is what makes this site plan go. Um, and our real estate people contacted his broker, Lauren Morris, and said, "We'd like to talk to you, Mr. Porter, about making an offer on your property to, um, make you whole on your industrial land that you hold now that is obviously attractive for warehouse development, um, and we want to make you, uh, an offer that would be market to that He asked us, through our staff that works out at the intake, to call his broker. That's how we got the number, the name and the number. But once we called, they never called us back. So we're not here just trying to stop the development and not make these landowners whole. We obviously are ready to have a conversation with Mr. Porter to make him whole with the value of his land, but he wouldn't even call us back. So we're disappointed that there's this drive to put a warehouse right next to the, the, the intake on Abercorn Creek, when we're sitting here and we're ready to talk to people about dealing with the issue of making them whole on their real estate. And it's unfortunate that we didn't get a call back. We want to have the conversation, but obviously a conversation requires two parties. So we're confused that he asked us to call, gave us the broker's name, and then we called the broker, um, we had a conversation, but never got a call back. So, just to let you know, we're, we're, we're trying, um, our very best, uh, to work this out to everybody's satisfaction, but, you know, we've gotta have some more, uh, engagement on the other side if we're gonna be able to work it out the way we want to. So, um, that, that's the angle that I wanted to bring to the podium tonight, uh, because we remain willing and, um, uh, able to have those conversations if, 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 if Mr. Porter wants to come to the table, and of course, the other property owners in the area, they're smaller in scale, but Mr. Porter's kind of the big, uh, the big, uh, the big one that we have to, to deal with initially. So, anyway, that's our comments for tonight. Thank you.
Let's see if I understand. So the City of Savannah would acquire that property from Mr. Porter and then put a blockade on, or a moratorium on the construction of any warehouse?
No, we would just buy it and just leave it in conservation.
Conservation.
Yes, it'd be undeveloped, and we actually talked about, um, the prospect of turning it into some kind of a passive park for Effingham County residents, and then worked together with the county just to make sure the area was, uh, accessible for
Admirable.
... nature and education and stuff like that. But it would never be developed into anything because it would serve as a buffer around the intake.
Yeah, it's admirable.
And that, that's, that was our objective when, um, I got word in first part of February and had our real estate people reach out, but once again, it was unfortunate that we couldn't start a discussion on that approach. Still willing to have that discussion.
If that inlet intake, uh, is compromised, um, with toxins, then we wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to use that water, and then there'd be a crisis with, um, no water source.
Yes, other than the groundwater, uh, sources that are still available in the region, yes, the surface water source, which is about 50 million gallons a day of production, uh, would be suspended until, um, the source could be remediated to a point where it could be reused again as, as raw water for treatment.
Do you have any idea what a desalination plant would cost?
I do not, but not, not cost-effective, uh, and, and, and not practical, um, in terms of where we're located with our current treatment plan on Highway 21.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feldner.
Thanks.
Can we put a, a picture of where Mr. Porter's land, exactly how much land he has there?
Eighty acres. That's a, that's a, that's a good stock.
The big, the big, where the store is, the real big.
It's 84.38 acres, according to the tax records.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Chester Porter. I listened to what the gentleman said, and, um, in some aspects, he's correct and some he's not, uh, the City of Savannah did contact, um, my real estate broker and made an offer, uh, which I wasn't interested in. And, um, but I already had a contract, ongoing contract with somebody else. So, uh, their offer was not anywhere near what I was offered by somebody else, and that's the reason that, uh, I wasn't interested with dealing with the City of Savannah. Also, too, I might add that I worked for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service for 25 years in this area, with the Department of Interior. I was a federal officer for them. And I do remember working the, uh, tritium spill when they had, when they had it. I also remember the people from the nuclear plant coming down when we had a hunt and, uh, setting up a machine at Abercorn Land, I mean, excuse me, at Millstone Landing, and testing all of the animals, testing them for radiation, uh, when we had a hunt. Yeah, I was involved in it, but they never gave us any of the information that they, they got from that. It was privileged information. So, I don't know how that turned out, but I do remember all of that. And, uh, as far as, um, and the only reason I got up and spoke was because he mentioned my name, and I wanted to make sure that you understood that. Uh, I didn't want to deal with the City of Savannah. One of their employees asked me if, if I would, and I said, "Call my broker and talk to her. And if she's up for it, then we'll discuss it." But she wasn't. And I, when she conveyed the information, what they was offering, I wasn't interested either. So, but, um, one of the things you need to remember, too, is all the property there, where I, where my property is located, it's on, it's on a high point in the river, one of the highest points. Reason they built the, uh...
Treatment plant.
Treatment plant there. Um, but all of the water that falls or comes on their property runs off on the mine. That's the way the la, the land lays. And everything runs toward, towards the center of my property, and then drains down and goes into Canyon Creek, and then goes back out into the river. As far as, um, they're worried about, um, spills, they've had two spills there on that water plant. Um, and I think if you go back and check, you'll find out that, that I'm, that I'm, one was Jesse W. Exley, owned the property, who I bought it from. They had to purchase 15 acres from him because of an oil spill from the, uh, water plant. They also have on-site at this time, two, I think they're 15,000-gallon tanks, approximately 20 feet from the river. Uh, they have two, uh, backup generators that come on every Wednesday, and that fuel and stuff is far those generators. So they're right, right there on the river. So if there's a potential for a problem, they've got one, too. Um, but I just wanted to clear the air on that, uh, about what he mentioned about not dealing with the City of Savannah.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Okay, thank you very much.
And, uh, and of course, this entire conversation is for discussion, but, um, at present, we're not discussing Mr. Porter's property. His is not up for rezoning.
You know, it starred there. I just wanted to clarify that.
I mean, yeah, there's two big stars that, that aren't...
Go back, the other map. Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. We're, we're, the next one. That's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about. That is correct.
The others already in...
That is correct. The, the, the two big stars on that map make it misleading.
Yeah.
So, is there any other comments at this time? I mean, obviously, there's gonna be another meeting. And at that next meeting, obviously, there will be a, on the 19th, there will be a sketch plan for review as well. So is that it? Is meeting adjourned?
Oh, this item, yes.
Ma'am?
Is that it?
Do I have to read the final item?
Well, if you can't vote, you've, you wouldn't, if you're not voting on the rezoning, you wouldn't go on to the sketch plan, so we're not gonna discuss that.
Um, and obviously, we encourage everyone that can, um, on the 19th, um, I think you can get a call-in number, is that correct? Will they be able to get a call-in number?
Yeah, we can.
Yes, okay. Anyone that wishes to call in or be in attendance?
We don't have to do anything officially to set that date.
I, I, I think you need to table it to the special call meeting on the 9th.
We need to table it? Okay.
All right, that's why I want...
That's what I, that's, I mean, it was, just said no action. I just kinda thought the same. Um, so we will need a vote to table until the 19th meeting. Um, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion at 1:00. Is that what we landed on?
Yeah, 4:19 at 1:00 PM.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table this item until April the 19th at 1:00 PM for a special call meeting.
Is there a second?
No second.
Second, Mr. Zipper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item 16 is a sketch plan. Greg Coleman is agent for William Roger Spikes. Approval of a sketch plan for Effingham Business Center. This is located on Old Augusta, it's in the 5th District. Um, can I also get a motion to table this?
I'll make the same motion.
Same second. Second, Mr. Zipper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Discussion of upcoming planning board training.
Yes, so you'll...
Why is everybody smiling?
You'll, you'll see in, in front of you, I, I believe, uh, Lindsay printed just a, a brochure, uh, there is going to be offered on May the 17th in Richmond Hill, uh, Planning and Zoning 101 Workshop, which, I'm glad Tim is here, so he can tell us about planning board training and the importance thereof.
Well, I'll take care of two things. So, a couple of things, and this was actually brought up by someone I want to take the time to introduce to y'all, who's going to be, uh, you all are gonna be dealing with regularly now. Uh, the county, after a long search, uh, found a development services director, uh, his name is Steve Kandler, uh, he's right over there. He was a, um, planner in both, and city manager, uh, in both North Carolina, Bozeman, Montana, uh, and, um, uh, various work, uh, with the real estate industry, um, locally. Uh, he's a resident of Guyton. We're excited to have his level of experience here. Uh, one of the first things he mentioned to me, uh, was the, uh, importance on making sure that you all get, um, proper information and training, uh, and, um, you know, that'll be based on, uh, on your schedule and your desire, uh, on that. Uh, but I think we start off maybe with, uh, finding out what areas, uh, are important to y'all, uh, what areas that you could, uh, and this is formal, uh, uh, formal, uh, training with regards to development and planning, uh, but also regular communications, uh, with regards to what's going on in the county. Uh, Steve has kind of been drinking from a fire hose for the last couple of days, um, so he knows that there's a lot going on in the county, and, um, uh, it is a lot more that, uh, that he doesn't know yet. So, uh, I don't think there's a formal agenda on the training on that, um, but we will follow you, uh, we will follow up with you, uh, to let you know, uh, what the plans are. But Steve just started on Monday, so I, uh, give us, uh, give us a few days and we'll, we'll get some schedule, uh, of, of potential dates and plan, and, uh, curriculum and however you want to call it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, but if, if you are interested, that is, the upcoming opportunity is on May 17th in Richmond Hill. Uh, the Coastal Regional Commission is having, uh, Planning and Zoning 101 Training.
So do we go on and sign up, or we let staff know and they'll sign up for us?
If, if you let me know, we'll take, we'll take care of that.
Last time I checked, UGA was in Athens, not Richmond Hill.
I'm glad to say they're all over the place.
They're making a special, a special visit.
All right. Any, anything further? Any other business anyone wished to bring to this board tonight? Meeting adjourned.